How are you?
Pretty good, sir.
It's six o'clock. The meeting will start. Madam Secretary?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a special meeting on Monday, September 19, 2011, at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas.
All right. Mr. Barrera, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this time that we can spend together. Lord, I pray that you will bless this assembly. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will help us with the details of this meeting, Lord. Lord, I just pray that you would be in them. Lord, I pray that you will bless the mayor and his family. Lord, I pray that you will bless them in a way that increases their faith. Lord, I pray that you will bless the commissioners of this meeting. Lord, I pray, Lord, that you will help them, Lord, in the preparation for this meeting. Lord, I thank you so much, Lord, for Brownsville. I thank you, Lord, for this great nation that we live in. God, I pray that you will help us, Lord, to make you happy. Lord, I pray that you will help us to bless you back for blessing us so mightily and gratefully. God, I pray that you will help us to be about your work. Thank you for the opportunity, what it is, to serve and volunteer. Lord, I just pray that you will continue to lead and, God, and direct us as we go. May your hand be on us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
First action item.
Action item, consideration and action to adopt budget amendment, Resolution Number 2011-052, to amend the General Fund, Convention and Tourism Fund, Landfill Tipping Fee Increase Fund, Airport Fund, Public Transit, Brownsville Golf Center Fund, Employee Benefit Fund, 2004 CEO Fund, Connect Brownsville ARRA Grant Fund, Traffic Signal Synchronization ARRA Grant, City Plaza Upgrades ARR Grant Fund and Planning Non-City BG Grants Fund to provide funding for various expenditures.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, this is more like a housekeeping item that we do at the end of the year. We look at some of the line items, not only in the General Fund, but other funds for any needs of additional funding. And there are some corrections that we want to make. For instance, the first ones, actually the first four, if you recall when we approved the budget last year with the PUB, there were some line items in revenues, on the revenue side. For instance, the utility services, in other words, they were going to provide the services for the various nonprofits in the city. That was part of our budget. We're removing that item with this budget amendment. We also had late penalty charges that were also, that we were going to generate some revenues from the PUB last year, where that never took place. Waiving of the PUB billing fee, $459,000. All of these revenue accounts that were in the budget that never materialized, so we're coming in and changing some of those numbers. We're also, on the maintenance fee for the sports park, we had about over $700,000. We're actually getting funded $550,000, so that's an adjustment that we're making. We're making adjustments to the insurance. We have a wellness coordinator. We had changes to the legal department. Warrant officers, those are the ones that go out and issue warrants for those people that are delinquent or in the municipal court fines. We find out that because of the actions that we take, there were three, what we call roundups, that the city made this fiscal year. They collected about $143,000, the police officers did, at municipal court. And the overtime was only $65,000. So you know very well that by using these procedures, we actually come out ahead on the long run. There were other changes in the police departments that we had, we need budget amendments for. We also need budget amendments for the human resources, fire department, Convention and Tourism Fund. We needed to transfer $80,000 because the hotel motel tax is not what we had budgeted. So we are making a transfer from the General Fund to the Convention and Tourism Fund. There's also a transfer to the Airport Fund, about a million. We also went down and looked at some of the revenue accounts, and we increased some of the revenue estimates. Sales tax, for instance, we noticed that we had a very good month, this last month. So we are actually adjusting the sales tax revenue, the sales tax budget by $550,000, meaning increase in it. We also had a good year in building permits. We're increasing it by $130,000, $130,000. Electrical permits, $52,000. All of this are all increases. Gas and plumbing permits, $30,000. Mechanical permits, $50,000. Occupation taxes, $7,000. We also had an AEP settlement that the PUB was involved with. We kept half of that, $186,382. That was not part of the original budget. We're also increasing the transfer from the PUB based on the latest numbers from the PUB, $1.1 million. And there's also other changes associated with this. And altogether, the only amount that's being hit by the General Fund is $92,000. We also have what we called, every time we have grants, grants obviously require a local share. And it determines, we determine that there are some, some of the era grants that the city had, for instance, at the library, Signal Synchronization, City Plaza Upgrades, Texas Development Water Grant, and the Transit System. All of these are grants that are awarded to the city, but they required a local match, and the local match is about $586,133. We also made adjustments to the utility usage in several funds. And that's what all these budget amendments are for, that we would like to have them go into the budget this fiscal year. So it's a resolution that we are requesting that the City Commission approve.
Entertained motion?
Will you approve?
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Next item, please.
Public hearings. Item number two, public hearing in action on Resolution Number 2011-053, to adopt the City of Brownsville fiscal year 2012 annual budget and resolving other matters thereof.
Okay, this is hopefully our final public hearing on our budget for fiscal year 2012. And this public hearing is to adopt the budget for the coming fiscal year. This particular slide shows the entire City of Brownsville budget, which equals to $123,430,797. What a, I mean, $123,430,797. We originally, we had budget amendments in the General Fund, and we are including the latest budget amendments that were just approved by the Commission on the first item. Our fund balance, estimated fund balance based on the budget numbers for the end of the fiscal year, meaning 2011, is close to $8 million, 7.8 million. Again, these are budget numbers, and they're all estimates based on what's in the budget, the latest approved budget. If there's any expenses that are not spent, obviously, that generates funds for the ending fund balance. If we exceed some of the revenue accounts, that's also shows up in the ending fund balance. We will not know until what our fund balance is, until probably until November, when we actually close our books in late October. We probably know, we'll probably have an estimate sometime in early November. They do not become official until the audit is complete, and that's done around February of next year. Again, this budget for 2011 shows a very low reserve. In years past, we've had strong reserves. We feel that this particular fiscal year, 2011, our reserves are not going to be as strong as they were in the past. As we move forward to 2012, we see that the ending fund balance at the end of September 2012 is just under $6 million, 5.8 million, and that's a reserve of 6.75%. Again, it's a low amount. What we've done, we went ahead, when we started the budget, we increased revenues by $1,294,983. We also decreased expenditures by $1,251,149. We've gone through all of these steps. And now our deficit, if you recall, the last meeting we had, our deficit was 2.3 million. We've narrowed it down to 2 million. So we went down 300,000. And that's one of the reasons is the, we did increase the sales tax projections by 275,000. The, if you compare the 2011 versus the 2012, again, there's the 2 million shortage for 2012. The fund balance at the end of September 2012 would be $5,584.46, again, 6.74% reserves. In years past, we had the unfortunate that we were, actually got, received financial assistance from the PUB in 2010 and 2011. And then we also had, we shared some of the, half share of the lawsuit settlements. So altogether, if you put those two years together, we actually received about a little over $7 million from the PUB that we normally don't get. Again, in 2012, we don't see any economic assistance coming in from the PUB. This gives you a history of our fund balance. We've been very strong the last few years. Over, in most cases, in most years, it's gone over the 15%, it's our goal to keep a fund balance above 15%. We've done that in years past. We don't see that at 2011. Our 2011 fund balance shows around 7, 8%, 7.9, 8.53%. Again, this is just a shard of the history of the fund balance that reflects, 2011 shows the 7.8 million. Again, one of the, we've mentioned this in the past. We want to make sure we keep enough reserves for any unexpected expenditures, mainly the hurricanes, like we had in 2008. We had Hurricane Dolly. We actually took a net loss of 1.2 million, and that's one of the reasons why we want to maintain a strong fund balance for unexpected costs that may come along. This are some of the, what I mentioned to you earlier. Every time we get grants, it does require a local share. And in some cases, for instance, the Connect Brownsville Era Grant, which is the library, local share is 42.37%. Signals Synchronization, local share is 16.67. City Plaza, that was one of our best grants as far as not contributing local share, only 4.51. Texas Water Development Grant, required 57.68%. And then the Transit System Capital Grants. Altogether, if you look at this particular slide, you see that it took $5 million from the General Fund just to put in the local share. We, in other words, one, I'm sorry, $1,167 is our local share. Total grant was $5 million, total expenditures, $5,1691. So it was 23.34% that came from the local funds. This is something that we have discussed earlier, the effective tax rate. The effective tax rate for the coming year is 66,0262. If we look at the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see that the distribution between the General Fund, which is the MNO, and the debt service is 59% to the MNO and 41% for the debt service. If you recall when we issued the debt this summer, a little over $5 million, we did indicate to you that we were not going to raise the tax rate for debt service. That debt service rate of 27 remains at 27 cents. We kept it at that rate. What we're asking tonight, as we move forward, if you look at the left-hand side, bottom left-hand side, the tax rate that we are requesting that the City Commission approved, which will generate $2 million in additional funds, would be the rollback tax rate of 70,0613. The General Fund will then give 43 cents. And again, debt service retains the 27. As far as distribution percentage, it'll be 61.43% for the General Fund and 38.57% for debt service. This are some of the tax rates that the city has had the last 10 years. In 2003, 68 cents. And then 2007, it went down to 65 cents. And it's, we've maintained 65 cents for several years. The 2012 effective tax rate is 66,0262. Again, we're asking, even though the budget that was presented to you tonight includes only the effective tax rate, that's the reason why we have a deficit of $2 million. If we include the rollback rate, then we'll be able to balance the budget at 70 cents, 70,0613. As we move forward, what does it take, how much does it generate? A half penny will generate $248,000. A penny, $497,911. A penny and a half, increase, $746,867. Two pennies, $995,823. Two and a half pennies, $1,244,779. Three pennies, $1,493,734. Three and a half pennies, $1,742,690. Four pennies, $1,991,646. And then the 4.0351 pennies, which will give you all the way up to the rollback rate, $2,90123. As far as percentage increases, the highest percent we approved, if you approve the rollback rate tonight, it'll be a 6.11%. And we have those based on half percent, all the way to the four cents. It's .76 for half a penny. One penny is 1.1% and so forth, all the way to the four pennies, 6.11%. What does it do to a taxpayer, as far as how much more is he going to be paying, or they're going to be paying on a homestead? If we have the average homestead in Brownsville, taxable value is $80,582. A penny will be $8.06 a year more. Two pennies, $16.12 more. Three pennies, $24.17 additional. $32.23 for four pennies and 4.0351, that's the rollback rate. So a household would be paying annually $32.52 more if the rollback rate is approved tonight. Or we would go with a two cents, the way it's there. The other fund that obviously we're going to cover with you tonight is the Debt Service Fund. This is the fund that pays our debt. We, sales, the property taxes are deposited into this fund to retire our long-term debt. Our long-term debt is $158,595, $10,555 is self-supporting debt. And that's $12,555 comes from various sources. Palceo La Rosaca, $925,000. The linear park that CDBG funds pays for that, $1,560. The community incentive, BCIC Sports Park, $2,525. Airport improvements, $5,545. Those are all the outstanding debts that other sources pay, which is $10,555. Our ratings have been very strong lately. We're rated at AA3 with Moody's. At one time, we're at BAA1. So we've gone up four steps, or four grades, since the BAA1 way back in the early, in the late '80s. At Center and Coors, we're at A+. The grade is tougher, as you can see, A+, it's medium, upper-medium grade. And then the Fitch is high-quality, again, AA-. So we have high-quality ratings with Moody's and Fitch, and media, upper-medium grade with Standard and Coors. One of the areas that probably we need to look at, that some, that may be able to generate some revenue for us, and this will not take effect until the year 2013, fiscal year 2013, and that's the free port, free port tax. Right now, we give up $780,081 in free port exemptions. And this is just an explanation of the free port exemptions. These are all goods that are held intrinsic, and they are non-taxable. If they're held for 175 days or less for assembly. This is something that, a new law that was just passed, Senate Bill 1, that will allow us to revisit this particular item. And we must make a decision before December 31st whether or not we're going to continue allowing this exemption on free port, or we just eliminate it. And if we eliminate it, again, we can generate $780,821 in additional revenues that we have not been receiving because of that exemption. Again, this is something that we also, if you're over 65, you get an additional $6,000 exemption in homestead. And of course, we also have the freeze. If you're over 65, your property is frozen until you die. This is something that's not in the budget. There were requests, physicians requested, that are not in the budget. Altogether, it's over $2 million capital. Again, we have major needs for capital expenditures. We just don't have the funding. And the only way we're going to be able to fund some of these projects is by issuing COs. Again, special projects. There's a great need for the city to do a lot of projects, a lot of capital improvements, that we just don't have the resource to do it. Our General Fund, why a tax rate increase as we move forward? Well, right now, we're down $2 million. We have already reduced the expenditures by $1,251,000. This budget includes an adjustment to the police officer salaries. It's going to cost about $645,000. And this is not only for 2013, 2012, but also for 2013 and 2014. This is just some of the additional pay that the police officers received, other than the base pay. Those are the breakdown of various stipends, you might call them, that each police officer gets. The tax, this particular budget does not include any increase, any pay increases for the firefighters. If we get, if we grant a 3%, it's going to cost around $303,000. Again, this amount is not in the budget. This budget does not include any adjustments for cost of living increases for civilian employees. And again, because we started in 27, 2007, we began freezing values for those people that are 65 and disabled. We estimate that we lose approximately $380,000 in added armed taxes. This is something that wasn't there before, but now it is, it's in place where we do not, we freeze the value of the homesteads for those over 65 and disabled. Again, this is something we used to gain, but it's no longer there. This is the collective bargaining pay at, above the base pay that the firefighters received. It goes from security pay can go up from, up to $6,120 for a firefighter, just like police officers. Okay, and it's something that we also have discussed, that if the census, the city population plus the rural portion is over 200,000, and we should know pretty soon whether or not this is going to happen. We estimate that it's going to go over the 200,000. So that means that the city will lose 1.8 million in federal operating subsidies for transit. Again, this is something that we need to look at very closely because we do provide the service to our citizens, and which is a service that we certainly know that it is needed in our community. Again, this is something that we've discussed. The PUB did not, is not assisting us for any economic assistance this fiscal year like they did in the past, the $3 million in 2010 and the 2.5 in 2011. This is something that, again, sales tax revenue is higher than 2011 by a little over 1.5% or $375,000, but it's still below the amount recognized in 2008 by $758,000 or 3%. Again, sales tax, the yellow ones are all estimates. The last two, 2011, 2012, we're still below the 2008 in sales tax. Veterans Bridge, something we've talked about in the past. It's way down, and obviously, this has an impact on our General Fund budget. Its revenues have really, really gone down. As you can see by this charting, we used, in 2006, it was 2.9 million. The 2012 estimate is 1.1 million. That's a huge drop, and it keeps dropping every year. Hopefully, in 2013, it'll start going up. But right now, 2011, 2012, we don't see any improvements whatsoever. As we move along to the Convention and Tourism Fund, those are the estimates for the coming year. Expenses that are listed there for all the agencies. They are the same numbers that we had for 2011. 2012 has the same budget numbers coming 2012. Community development is something that we've already gone through. This is just the federal grants, $4,652,901. And then there's the distribution of how the money, how the money was allocated. Landfill tipping fee, we show a fund balance at the end of 2012, September 2012, of $1,428,710. Airport, we are proposing, as you've already approved the budget amendment, to kick in. It's already reflected here in 2011, the additional $1 million for the airport. The bridge fund, again, very low. Motor vehicle parking system is just barely breaking even as far as expenses and revenues. Only $12,000 revenues above expenses. The golf course, we see a transfer from the General Fund of, we've lowered it to $300,000. We had $493,000 in 2011. Hopefully, it'll get better. We have a transfer of only $300,000 in 2012. Transit system, we are, we expect to get $2,586,87 from the feds. Again, if we exceed the $200,000, we won't see that $2 million coming in anymore. So we're going to have to come up with local funds to generate those funds of $2,580,000. Right now, we are fortunate that the federal transit administration is paying for half of the loss, which is $2,586,87. And this is some of the other area, some of the other revenues that go into the, into the bus system. We have a state grant of $517,000, and we have a General Fund cash transfer of $594,000. Now, that number could easily grow to $2,500,000 if we'd lose, if we go over the 200,000 population. We, that concludes my budget presentation. Again, the budget that's, that has been filed and is here tonight, it's just the effective tax rate. It does not include the rollback rate. The rollback rate, the four cents that we are actually asking you to approve tonight so that we can have a balanced budget to start the year. And this is a public hearing, Mayor, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Public hearing is now open. I mean, we need a motion? No. Go ahead, Mr. Barrera.
You want to do it early so you won't forget. I'm getting up in the ears, brother. So we need some bifocals here. So we need some bifocals here. Honorable City Commissioners and my fellow Americans, look at this beautiful, the Port of Brownsville lowers tax rate for the 18 years in a row. Don't you wish you could say the same thing? Instead, you're sucking it to us again. What a tremendous big difference in this Herald notice. The county is raising taxes with the exception of one commissioner there, Sylvia Benavides, Sofia Benavides. She voted against it. The port is lowering taxes on all, all of us. I, as a past educator of 38-plus years here in Washington, didn't get contaminated by the Washington epidemic. Nor did, did I get contaminated by the Poncy schemes of those people in Washington. We're in a depressional area, people, and it's tough on us. It's the same song and dance from you all. We're short of revenue. Brother Pete, that's what he mentioned. And who do you think you're going to target us again? The stupid taxpayers for your hungry, for more wasteful spending. Too many of us don't protest or even call your office or come to, be present here to contest this raising taxes. Two cents, you say. Four cents, you say, on $100. But there's a lot of two little cents, two, 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 all the way for, for your homestead. It just doesn't make sense at this time. I'm asking the public at large, are these are your friends that you want in the city and the county court to raise your taxes? They're really stealing from you legally. That's what you're doing. I don't think so. I'll be going to thank Mr. Campirano and Commissioners at the port for their forward-looking vision and realistic approach to handling finances on our taxes. The port Commissioners and staff are the envy of all of us conservative taxpayers who are saying enough is enough. Mister and mistress Commissioners, CPAs, et cetera, change your wasteful ways and views that is sinking our city, our county, and our beloved nation into oblivion, into oblivious state. Thank you very much. I hope you hear me and take some action positively. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Letitia Perez Garesoria. Again, on the eve of trying to raise taxes, yes or no, we're, we're still trying to come before you and for you to listen to some of the points that we might have and give us consideration. Raising the taxes is the last thing the taxpayer wants to hear, myself included and on top of the list. I realize that the city is large. I, I realize that there's a lot of people coming in from other countries and migrating here and there's a burden on, on schools, on society and what have you. But yet, it boils down to the real taxpayer, the one that really goes out and doles, doles the money at the end of the year or the beginning of the year. We all have to pay for it. There's no free medicine, okay? There's no free taxes. There's no free clinics. Somebody's got to give that bottom dollar. Somebody's got to have that bottom line and we do, the taxpayer. You do, I do, we do. So as baby boomers are retiring and there's a lot of economic uncertainty, a new year arises, 2012, we have a lot of decisions to make, just like we had a lot of decisions to make when we elected this commission. I realize that you have a lot of challenges before you. It's not easy to come up with solutions and certainly there's more questions than there are answers. And we appreciate that you take the time and some of the consideration to really bog down and try to solve some of these things. However, there's a lot of things that come to the forefront when you read the newspaper. The Herald reports something, the commission says something else. And one thing that brought it to my attention is that there's difference, discrepancy in numbers, what Mr. Gonzalez reports and what Mr. Noe Inojosa from the P U B reported, a discrepancy of almost $3 million, which means that the general fund balance would be $3 million over what Mr. Gonzalez reported. So if you have a $3 million plus an overload, then you really don't need to raise taxes. Now, speaking to Mr. Gonzalez this, this afternoon, he tells me that he doesn't have the complete numbers, Mr. Inojosa. However, if he does or if he doesn't, something's wrong with the communication line, and I keep on saying that. If you cannot communicate between entities and you all are city entity, we have problems. We need to give the correct information to the taxpayer so we're able to come up with the same kind of an answer and the same kind of a concept. Therefore, there's information out there and bad blood and bad information because we need, as taxpayers, to be assured that you all are in synchrony with each other. Okay, you're not going to take from the P U B this year, fine. However you're going to do it, it comes out to raising everybody's taxes. Because we can't communicate, because we can't partner, because we can't talk, what is the problem? Lack of professionalism, lack of education, lack of friendship? I don't know. But I do know that there's, there's something going on here that we're not taking care of. And that troubles me because at the end of the line, people like Mr. Barrera come here and say, hey, we're tired of it. And you know what? There's questions to be answered and there's no answers for us from the commission. We need to be able to count on, on the commission and the P U B and whatever entity we're talking about. When it comes to raising taxes, everybody's crying. This is an impoverished area and you sit on one of the poorest cities in the United States, the poorest county in the United States, and we're here talking about raising more taxes and doing this and doing that. Not the answer. And I don't know how we want to communicate, but if we don't know how to communicate and work across party lines and interests, then we have a big problem and I guess we're not going to go past it. Because this conversation will take place next year as well. So if we can't work within our same city, I encourage this commission, please work within yourselves among trying to get the right information out there, giving us some hope at the end of the day that something that we elected will do something for us, will represent us, and we're going to all come out winning, not just one person. Let's not work for one person. Let's work for everybody, the common good. We have to. We would like to work, you know, we'd like to hear that, that our Commissioners are working for the common good. And that's all I say. Please try to work a little bit across your, your lines and without, set your personal agendas aside because that's not going to work. We, we need some relief and we would appreciate all of you working and representing us to the best of your ability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Touriste, taxpayer of Brownsville. First of all, one question that comes to mind as I saw all of you up here, do you really know what you're doing? That's the question. Do you really understand what Mr. Gonzalez said up there? Do you really understand? Well, let me give you some information from the past. On the percentage increases on tax, affected tax rates, in 2004, the city went up 2.98%. In 2005, the city went up 8.09%. In 2006, the city went up 2.25% tax increase. In 2007, 7.87% increase. In 2008, 4.95% increase. 2009, 1.62% increase. And in 2010 and 2011, since you all did all the mathematical calculations, it was zero because P U B bailed us out. They brought in the money. Now, I just heard Mr. Gonzalez. If I'm wrong, you can ask Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Longoria, if I'm wrong with his numbers.
Again, if we could keep, nothing personal, please.
But what I'm saying, sir, is Brownsville has raised the taxes, even though you say don't. In 2008, I'm sorry, in 2007, the only reason it went, you didn't raise it that high because it would have gone to the voters.
We lowered it by three cents.
Yes, because it would have gone to the voters.
We lowered you by three cents.
No, sir. You would have gone to the voters, sir. It would. Ask Mr. Gonzalez.
You don't get it.
Commissioner, please, let's, let's go ahead.
It's in the facts. Ask Mr. Gonzalez. Now, on Action item one, which you had a change, I didn't hear one person here make any changes. All I heard is, accept it. I didn't hear anybody saying it's time for Brownsville to cut its pocketbook. The credit card has to be cut and you have not done it. Instead, you're increasing it. People ask me, they don't care, they don't come here because they said, you're not going to listen. And they don't really know, understand neither what, how the city is really working. They don't. I get to see it every day. I see what's being done, what's not being done, and sometimes we don't even know what's being done. So we're all confused. But when I see all of you here, especially one that doesn't really pay attention at all, because she is squibbling or doing something else, it's sad. It is sad. And it hurts me because I got to go back and I do talk to the public and I do tell them, it doesn't matter what we say, it's what your priorities are. It's not for the public. It is not for the public, sir. You should have cut some things down. Why didn't P U B help us this time? Yet the rates are going to go up. Like I said, none of you said anything. Golf course, let's get rid of it. Let's get rid of Channel 12. $150,000 could have gotten rid of it. We can save energy. Somebody wants to go green, let's get rid of Channel 12. The tourism, I don't understand it. Where is the tourism? I saw what up there, 500,000? 500, half a million dollars. And yet, we're not bringing it. That's the number one thing, we could make money, but we have lost it because the other cities in the valley has done a better job. We have not done a good job managing our money. It's going to hurt me because remember, the effective tax rate is going with, my value of my home just went up by $300. Okay? You're going to raise it four cents. I don't know how, they said $32. At the end, it still hurts me. It hurts everyone. And what hurts me is all of you here should have said something about cutting more things. But the taxes have been going up except the last two years. Next year, like I heard Letitia say, we're going to be back in base one. If we lose the money from the bus system, we're going to have a very nice bus station and we're going to be paying a lot of money to keep it going. So all of you had responsibilities and those responsibilities were not met by my expectations and a lot of people in Brownsville. We keep hearing here that we didn't raise taxes. Yes, you have. But did you manage the way you spend it? No. I'm very tight, Mayor, extremely tight. I use coupons every day to save a penny, one penny, and I taught that in my classroom. If you go on a date, take a coupon, save money. And this is what Brownsville needs to go on now. All of you have responsibilities. You better start using it because we voted you in here. Thank you, sir.
I use coupons all the time.
Yes, sir, Mr. Barrera.
I would like to ask Mr. Pete Gonzalez, have, haven't the taxes been raised every year for three or four years? Well, five years from, from, uh, what's that important? Well, all these five years, have, have they been raised every year, Mr. Pete?
Mr. Brother Pete, as you called him, will answer that question for you. Yep. Pete, were you, were you going to, I think he's going to put something on, up on the...
Well, I don't know if you can see it.
Just do the focus.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, Mariano Ayala, President and CEO of the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau. I was hoping not to speak today. You have my data, things that we have tried to promote this great city of Brownsville. But I am touched and offended. As the City Commissioner, I know you all hold back when you hear people with wrong information and giving the general public the idea that they know exactly what they're speaking about, when in truth, a little bit of information can do a great harm. And I just happened to walk in at a perfect time when I heard a concerned citizen say, why tourism? Let's cut it. I'll tell them why. And the cut, we have been cut. Three years ago, we had $800,000 to promote Brownsville because the City Commissioners faced what you're facing today. You all worked the figures, you tried to do the best to your ability to help as many agencies as possible. You cut the Convention and Visitors Bureau by $275,000. Okay? Okay. We know why you did it. We understand why you did it. I had 11 employees at the time. I went down to three. Oh, excuse me, let me call, include the cleaning lady. Three and a half, three and a half people working at the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Compared to millions of dollars for the island, am I right, Commissioner Samora? Millions of dollars. Compared to millions of dollars for McAllen, 1.4 million for Laredo, but Brownsville has 525,000. How dare you give them so much? We bring in tourism. They don't walk around with, I am a tourist, Mr. so-and-so. Look at me and my family. We are here playing baseball for three days. Look at the other 20 Ts that are in Brownsville playing flag football, but they don't go around the restaurant saying, I am a visitor, spending money, an average of $125,000. The figure that we use comes from the sports park. We use 10, uh, you multiply the number of teams, the number of days they're here, 15 per team at $125, 3.5 family members also. And I don't, if I could have my assistant, I don't have it in front of you. But in the tournaments that we were directly involved with, directly involved with, USSA, TAF, Nations Baseball, and for the first time in the history of UIL 5A, the state soccer tournament was held this side of San Antonio and it was held in Brownsville. Why? Because the Brownsville Independent School District, the, the sports park, the Parks and Recreation, and the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau united to fight against McAllen, West Nicole, Rio Grande City, Lojoya, San Benito, to have this tournament in Brownsville. We have contributed or helped contribute to the city $8 million. I think that's a pretty good return of investment for $525,000. I think that's a pretty good return of investment for $525,000 with three and a half employees. And you know why we're working it like that? Because we care about the city, and we understand what you're going through. Nobody wants this. But you can't afford to cut the ones that are going to help you bring in business. But we understand why you're doing it. We have the data to prove it. And you know what? These are facts, and I just want people to talk to you with facts instead of saying, "Cut, cut, cut." Let's do it reasonably, let's do it intelligently, but let's do it for the right reason, not just for the sake of cutting. I appreciate all the people that come up here with their concerns. Well, guess what? I am concerned too. In 2002, '06 and '07, it was great. The hotels were full with business people. The corporate world was great. The sports park had not been completed yet. So, when I talked to them, they, I asked them, "What direction do you want to go?" "Oh, we need help on the weekends." Great, the sports park's almost completed. We can bring in tournaments. You all understand, that's new money, new money. Then, the economy dropped. That's why we're here, fighting over raising taxes or not. I'm affected too. And if you're wondering, what have you done? My board cut my salary. And I'm not going to tell you by how much. It's nobody's business. It hurts. I've been affected personally, but guess what? I am still going to sell this great city of Brownsville because we are the jewel. We will be the sporting capital south of San Antonio. And finally, the cities coming together, different department heads are coming to us, Commissioner Samora and Commissioner Gariad. We've been getting it with other people downtown district. We're starting, you were there, Mayor? We're starting to bond. We're starting to unite. We're thinking out of the box. We're thinking double legal biker rally, aren't we? Can you imagine thousands of bikers here in Brownsville? Well, I can. But you cut the tourism out, and it won't happen. You cut out the ones that are helping you make money, it ain't going to help. You have to invest. Yes, let's invest smartly, intelligently, but let's not be affected by people with little facts, little bit of knowledge. Let's help the ones that are helping the city. And you know what? We promote everybody. We promote all the museums, the Mini Culture District, Gladys Porter Zoo, uh, put up the poster. One of the new steps we're taking... You don't think we believe in Brownsville? Pass them around. Look at this poster that we just came up with. We're so excited about Brownsville. Commissioner Samora gave us a great idea. We went through with it. Look at that poster. We're going to be promoting that everywhere. Why? We can't stand still. Even though we're hurting, we got to bring in the business. People stay overnight, they bring in money. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm telling you, I'm excited for Brownsville. We're hurting right now. But the time to advertise and promote is when you are hurting. Because out of sight, out of mind. Right now, we have to put Brownsville out there. Let everyone know where we are and what we've got to offer, and that's how we're going to bring them to Brownsville. I'm a little bit emotional because I also love my city like Mr. Barreto, who used to be my P.E. coach at N.E.S. Puget. Did you ever think this little kid from Oaxaca would be here, sir?
No, sir.
But thanks to you, I am. I went to school with Mr. Huaresti. I love his passion. But guess what? I got passion too. And I do sell Brownsville. Even though there's negative, I will not concentrate on the negative. I will concentrate on the positive, and I'm asking all of Brownsville to start concentrating on the positive. You don't have to help the public with negatives. The news media's doing that. Let's promote Brownsville positively. It's time that we get together and work together. Give me the 525,000. Don't raise me another penny. We need more. We need a lot more. But guess what? I understand what you're going through, and I will work with the 525,000 like I have been for the last two years. And guess what? We're going to bring in more people. But don't let anyone pull the wool over that there aren't any tourism. Because there is, and there'll always be because City of Brownsville is the place to go, and people are going to come. And guess what? Everybody in this room will now promote Brownsville like I am and you are. Thank you for letting me speak like this. I get excited because I love my city, and I don't envy you. I know you're trying to do the right thing. You will do the right thing. And thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Pete, there was a question on the floor.
Yes. This is a chart that I think you can see it. As you can see, the rollback rate in '99 was 67 cents, 63.23. The adopted rate was 67 cents, and so forth. Down the line, the city always adopted the lower of the rollback rate. In 2000, it was 70.0914. 68.50 was the adopted rate. In 2001, the rollback rate was 68.8397. City adopted 68 cents and so forth. In 2002, it was 69.1465. We adopted the 68. All of this, all for this, what this says is that the city adopted the, the rate below the, the adjusted rollback rate.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Anything further from the public? Entertain a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close.
Sec. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Just for the sake of the, of the public, we'd like to have these public hearings conducted orderly, nothing personal. I do want to tell each and every one of the speakers that I thank you very, very much for expressing your opinions, and I know some people get passionate about it, but what's life without a little passion? Okay? Thank you, Robert. We will now entertain a motion on action.
You need to close the public hearing, right?
Okay. The public hearings have been closed.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, not a problem, Pete. Now, we need some action on Mr. Gonzalez's recommendation of a rollback rate of .04. Do I hear a motion from the commission?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .700613, which is effectively a 6.11% increase in the tax rate. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we need to have a roll call?
Nay.
John. Aye. In favor?
Nay.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Nay.
I'm going to abstain from voting because I don't feel I have sufficient information to make an informed decision on this matter.
I voted aye. So, we have, we have a quorum. Okay? Motion passes. Yes, Mr. Barreto.
Did, did they raise the rate a penny, two, three, or four?
It's a four cent raise.
Four cents?
Yes, sir.
Four cents.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Next, next item?
Item number three, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 2011-1548, levying at Valerum taxes for the tax year 2011 for the use in support of the municipal government of the City of Brownsville, Texas for the fiscal year 2012, providing for the interest and sinking fund for the fiscal year 2012 of the City of Brownsville, Texas General Obligation Bonds.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Commission, this is the tax ordinance that will set, will set the, the tax rate for the coming fiscal year. The, the tax rate will be 70.0613 or 6.11% above, or a tax increase of 6.11%. As you make a motion to adopt the tax ordinance, we want to make sure that one of you will state, "I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of..." Just read that as, as a motion.
I think that's what the motion was, if I, if my recollection serves me.
Okay.
Madam Secretary?
Okay, this is for the tax ordinance.
Oh, for the tax ordinance, okay. We'll have to have a repeat then.
Yes, please.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .700613, which is effectively a 6.11% increase in the tax rate. I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And one abstention. A motion passes. Okay, I think the next item, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I think the next item is public comment, and I think I have two different speakers. The first one being Mr. ...